My name is Bob Thornton. I serve as the chairman. Before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Hodgins to lead us in prayer. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing today, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help us to remember our responsibility to serve our community with great insight guided by understanding, wisdom, and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of our great city. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on deliberations and on our efforts here today. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Inman will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America. And to the people of which we serve. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the law.
Thank you Commissioners Hodgins and Inman for the prayer and the pledge. I've asked Commissioner Dave Redmond to introduce the members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start over on that, on the opposite side of the dais from me. That lady who's sitting on the end is Ms. Kaye Wilson. She's a deputy city attorney and helps us in all of these matters. The empty chair next to Kaye is normally occupied by Jack Wall. He represents, he's an engineer by trade, and he represents the Rose Hall District. We'll miss him today. Karen Quasney is seated next to where Jack normally sits. She is a college professor, and she represents the Princess Anne District. The next empty chair unfortunately is normally occupied by Mr. Don Horsley. He is a farmer who serves at large, and we'll miss him too. He's typically the smartest guy in the room. Next to Don is Mr. Ron Ripley. Ron's in the real estate business, and he serves at large. Jan Rosinski is in property management, and Jan represents the Centerfield District. She is also the secretary of this body. In the center of the dais there in the bow tie is Mr. Bob Thornton. He too is in the real estate business, and he represents the Lynn Haven District. Seated to Bob's left is Dee Oliver. Dee serves at large, and she is our vice chairman. The next to Dee is Jeff Hodgson. Jeff represents the Beach District, and he's in real estate. Mr. Mike Inman is an attorney. We had all these people from respectable sorts of lines of work, and then we have Mr. Inman. He's an attorney. He also serves at large, and I say that in jest, he's a good guy. And then next to me, to my right, is Mr. David Weiner. He represents the Kempsville District, and he's a commercial salesman in the building industry. My name's Dave Redmond. I represent the Bayside District. I too am in the real estate business. And seated to my left is our planning director, Mr. Barry Frankenfield, who will introduce his staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Redmond. You may have noticed that all your names were up there in case anybody forgot. So we put all the planning directors, so, and for me, staff is helping me out because it's my most stressful time of the day to try to remember everybody's name. So, we have them all up there. We have the staff over here. I'll just read them. Carolyn Smith, our planning administrator, Kevin Kemp, our zoning administrator, Bill Landfair, which is our newest addition, our planning evaluation coordinator, Jimmy McNamara, Christine Gaye is here somewhere, I think, Robert Davis, Jonathan Sanders, Michelle Coleman, and then up here we have Pam Sandloop and Carol Dozier. And Cole Fisher was greeting you out front, and we missed Tori Rice, who is our new city attorney to support Kaye and to keep us out of trouble. So thank you very much for being here.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Barry. Yes, Jeff?
I don't know if everybody noticed the first slide you had on the, up on the presentation right there. I don't know if everybody knows where that is, but the beautification that's happening underneath the bridge at Rudy Inlet is really amazing. So if you ever had a chance to go by there, it's some pretty neat artwork that's being done.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioner Redmond for the introductions. The first order of business is the explanation of the rules that we use to run the meetings. Commissioner Rosinski, the secretary, will explain these rules.
Thank you Chairman Thornton. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meeting. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and members of this committee with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, to please silence it or turn it off at this time. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. A complete set of the rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda for today. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there is any request for a withdrawal or a deferral for any item on the agenda. Consideration of these will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda or those items which the Planning Commission believes are unopposed and have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that action taken here today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. Final approval for, or denial for any item is made by City Council. The commission thanks you for your attendance. We hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you Chairman Thornton.
Thank you. As Jan said, the first order of business is to deal with those items that are to be deferred or withdrawn. I have been informed that items 14, D1, and D2 have all been requested to be deferred. Is there any opposition or anyone that wants to speak to those matters before we move on May I have a motion to defer item 14, D1, and D2? And D2, I think the request was for a 30-day deferral. The others are city matters.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that items 14, D1, and D2 be deferred.
Second.
Second.
And with the provision that D2 would be for 30 days.
With the provision that D2 would be for 30 days.
So we have a motion from Vice Chair Oliver and a second from Commissioner Rosinski.
By a recorded vote of nine to two, items 14, D1, and D2 have been deferred. D2 being deferred for 30 days.
Thank you. The next order of business are those items that we're going to place on the consent agenda. The vice chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, this afternoon, we have 11 items on the consent agenda. The first matter is Agenda Item Number One, and this is an application for a conditional use permit, bulk storage yard on property located at 5312 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Kempsville District. Do we have a representative?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair Oliver. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing both the landowner and the applicant on case number one. We appreciate this item being on the consent agenda. It's with the revised condition that I believe you all have, and again, appreciate work by staff and your openness on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this application being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Weiner to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. This is a conditional use permit for bulk storage yard. The northernmost 10,000 square feet of the subject property was used for a former tenant as a bulk storage yard. The towing business was operating with a conditional use permit when the current property owner purchased the site in 2017, and the lease was terminated. Subsequently, the applicant has entered into a lease for office space in the tow yard of the new property owner. Either the applicant nor the property owner were aware of needed a conditional use permit for bulk storage area. The applicant towed this for the city police department, therefore the tow yard will be used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The applicant is seeking deviation from the required Category 5, 6 landscape screening. The applicant intends to replace the portion of the fence along the western property line adjacent to Haynes Furniture to match the existing solid fence along the other property. And on the north and east side, if, on Condition 1, Number A, that's been added, as when the property of the north and south, or north and east are developed, the required Category 5 landscape screenings shall be installed on those sides. Staff has referred, recommended approval, and we put it on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you.
Chairman, if we could go back to the deferral on D2, that was the application of 27th and a half street parking garage, I think. Mr. Redmond and Mr. Ripley, did you all need to abstain from those?
Yes. Thank you, by the way. That's why she's here, by the way. I paid so little attention to Agenda Item Number D2 that I was unaware that it was going to be deferred, and so I had intended to abstain from Agenda Item, Item D2. My employer is Dvaris Real Estate, Inc. They are a partner in the project 4525 Main Street, Suite 900, Virginia Beach.
Thank you.
And I'm abstaining too because we have an interest in a company called Telcom Systems, Inc., and I had employees that approached the applicant to do business. Whether they do business or not, I don't know, but I'm abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Two, and this is an application for a modification of conditions, commercial marina on property located at 3311 on Shore Drive in the Lynn Haven District. Is there a representative for this application?
If you want to call me that. Thank you, Mrs. Oliver, members of the Planning Commission, for the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant, Greer Han Industries, which as you know is Dockside Restaurant on Shore Drive. There are two conditions in the staff write-up. We're in total agreement with those conditions, and we thank you very much for placing this on consent agenda and for the staff working with us on this. We think it's going to be a good improvement to the property that's there on Shore Drive.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Redmond to read this into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. This is an application of Greer Han Enterprises Incorporated for a modification of conditions. It's a very simple application. They intend to modify, rebuild, expand the existing dock on this portion of the waterway adjacent to their restaurant. For anybody who's familiar with this city, with this part of the city, it is genuinely a crown jewel. The restaurants there and the atmosphere, the environment are just terrific, and this will be a very positive and welcome addition to the neighborhood. The Planning Commission is unaware of any opposition today to the application, and so we have placed it upon our consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Redmond. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Three, and this is an application as applicant and owner for a conditional use permit, childcare, education center, and a religious use on property located at 5497 Providence Road, located in the Kempsville District. Is there a representative on this application? Hi, welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
If you'll state your name and-
Jeff Bell, Pastor Providence Presbyterian Church, along with ruling elder Gary Reese, preschool director Brooke Nguyen. We appreciate the fine work of Jonathan Sanders on your commission and your willingness to hear this to improve the neighborhood and the preschool itself.
Great. Are the conditions set forth in the application acceptable to you all?
They are acceptable to us.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Weiner to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. This is a conditional use permit for childcare, education center, and religious use. This is a request for conditional use permit for Providence Presbyterian Church. The applicant is going to enrollment his 50 children. Proposed hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. A small fenced-in area exists in the property to provide children a safe and secure area to play outdoors. Staff recommends approval, and we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Five, and this is an application for a conditional use permit, a residential kennel on property located at 2880 on Indian River Road in the Princess Anne District. Is there a representative for this application? Hi, welcome. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
My name is Mary Bozard.
Great, thank you. And are the conditions set forth in the application acceptable to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Kwanzi to read this into the record.
Thank you Vice Chair Oliver. This is a conditional use permit request for a residential kennel, as Vice Chair Oliver said, at 2880 Indian River Road. The current zoning is Ag 2 agricultural in the Princess Anne District. The applicant currently has six adult companion dogs, and the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit when you have over four dogs, and the applicant was not aware of this, hence why we're here today, as well as the fact that the ordinance requires that any property occupied by animals be within, be 100 feet from an adjacent property line. This is within that 100 feet, and therefore they are asking for a, I'm sorry, a conditional use permit to vary from that. The condition that we have added to the report is that all dogs should be kept indoors between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00 with the exception for brief breaks through urination, defecation at nighttime. So there was some opposition in relation to a property next door, and we were trying to alleviate their concerns about parking overnight in particular, and the dogs are kennelled during the day when they are let outside. And so staff recommends approval without an added condition and the other form placed, and we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Six, and this is an application for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home on property located at 1605 Cliffwood Drive in the Rose Hall District. Is there a representative on this application? Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mae Veswaharu Singh.
And are the conditions set forth in the application acceptable to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this application being put on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Hodgson to read this into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for a family daycare to care for up to 12 children within a single-family dwelling in the Salem Woods neighborhood. The property has an enclosed backyard for the children to play safely outdoors. The proposed hours are set for 24 hours a day, including weekends, but typical hours will be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, land use policies for residential areas as it provides a valuable service for families in this suburban area. The staff recommends approval. The commission is in agreement, and we have placed it on our consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Seven, and this is an application for a conditional use permit for an indoor recreation facility on property located at 5258 A Fairfield Shopping Center located in the Kempsville District. Is there a representative on this application?
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Hi, welcome. Would you please state your name for the record?
Craig Calucci.
And are the conditions set forth acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Weiner to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an indoor recreation facility to be located within the Fairfield Shopping Center. An 18,000 square foot facility will provide baseball, softball instruction, batting and pitching cages, retail sales related to the sports equipment, and performance training. Is anticipated up to 17 employees at the facility. The proposed typical operating hours are 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, and 12:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. Staff recommends approval, and we have put it on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a disclosure. On this application, both the landlord and the tenant are represented by colleagues of mine in my office. They are real estate brokers in Dvaris Real Estate, Inc., where I work, 4525 Main Street. I don't have any financial benefit in this application. As a member of a group, I don't have any conflict. Nonetheless, I figured I would get that all on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter is Agenda Item Eight and Nine, and this is an application for a conditional rezoning in Ag 1 agricultural conditional, 2 conditional R10 residential, and a modification of proffers on property located on Princess Anne Road, located in the Princess Anne District. Is there a representative on this? Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Blevins, and I'm here representing the owner and the applicant.
Great. And the conditions set forth in the application acceptable?
Yes, they are.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Kwanzi to read this into the record.
Thank you Vice Chair Oliver. This is a request for conditional rezoning, modification of proffers in the Princess Anne District, 2800, 2900 block of Princess Anne Road. The request is twofold, a conditional rezoning application from Ag 2 agricultural district to conditional R10 residential district for three new parcels on 55,500 square feet of land adjacent to Princess Anne Meadows, a residential subdivision currently under construction. In 2016, a conditional rezoning to R10 residential district for 80-unit single-family residential neighborhood on 42.45 acres of developable land was approved by City Council. The developer recently entered into a contract with adjacent property owner in order to consolidate properties and is therefore asking for, to create an additional three lots and to provide additional open space on the property. The attributes are consistent with the land use policies of the suburban area part of the comprehensive plan, which calls for maintaining low residential density, the consolidation of parcels, as I mentioned, into single open space areas which include preservation of mature tree stands and well-configured tract of land that enables a safe, coordinated, and attractively designed development plan. As well, a preliminary drainage study has been done outlining the proposed stormwater strategy for the modified development. The DSC is confident that the submitted strategy has the potential to successfully comply with stormwater regulations. The site is located within the 6570 decimal subarea 2. The City Navy Joint Review Process reviewed the proposal and has found it in keeping with density in the area. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission puts it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number 10, and this is an application for a conditional use permit for an outdoor recreational facility on property located at 1025 Fisher Arch located in the Princess Anne District. Is there a representative for this application? Hi, welcome. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
I am Jason Blanchett. Thanks for having me. I'm the owner of Anderson's Virginia Beach.
Great. And are the conditions set forth acceptable to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Inman to read this into the record.
Thank you. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a miniature golf course known as an outdoor recreation facility, and it's on property owned and operated by Anderson's Garden Center, which has been there for a few years now, and it says B2 Community Business District. The surrounding uses are varied involving some farmland and some residential use, a church, and a pump station. The property was rezoned in 2014, and subsequently Anderson's has built a very nice garden center on the site. They found that they have room for a recreational facility on the site and have requested this use permit so they can have the miniature golf course, which you see on the screen there. And the submitted layout depicts approximately 9,700 square feet of golf course with walkways and putting surfaces constructed with permeable material and plant material that will act as infiltration rain gardens. A pavilion designed to offer shade to customers and for social events is depicted at the south end of the course, and it will have low voltage lighting. There are a couple of conditions that they submit, the site plan for review, and that it be limited, the recreation facility limited to the area depicted on the proposed site plan layout, and all light fixtures be shielded and angled away from adjacent residential uses. The comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the city's transition area, which serves as a unique use buffer for the low-density rural area from the more densely developed suburban area. This proposal meets the criteria for the comprehensive plan, and we have chosen to put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. The next matter is Agenda Item Number 11, and this is an application for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home on property located at 4440 Piscero Drive located in the Rose Hall District. Is there a representative for this application? Welcome.
Hello.
If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Jasmine Gould.
Thank you. And are the conditions set forth in the application acceptable to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you so much. Is there any opposition to this application being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Rosinski to read this into the record.
Thank you Commissioner Oliver. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for a family home daycare for up to 12 children within a single-family dwelling in the Salem Woods neighborhood. The property has an enclosed backyard for the children to play safely and outdoors. The proposed typical hours of operation will be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The proposed conditional use permit for this request, in staff's opinion, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, land use policies for residential areas, and will provide a valuable service for families in the suburban area. To alleviate the potential of congestion for client parking in the right-of-way, staff recommends a condition to stagger pickup and drop-off times. For the reasons above, staff recommends approval of this application. The applicant, as you heard, is agreeable to the conditions, therefore we have placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number 12, and this is an application for subdivision variance section 4.4b of the subdivision regulations on property located at 633 Princess Anne Road located in the Princess Anne District. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Mr. and Mrs. Fet. Unfortunately, I had to do too many of these little cleanup things, but appreciate the work of staff. The one condition's acceptable, and appreciate you on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Is there any opposition to this application being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Ripley to read this into the record.
This is a parcel of land. It's a lot in the very lower part of the city, Princess Anne Road below the Punggol Ferry Bridge Road, and so it's way down there, and it's, as Eddie alluded to, it's, it was transferred by deed or established by deed, but never really a plat was recorded, so this is a plat being recorded. As a result, it doesn't fit within the minimum lot size, and it has 99 feet versus 150 feet, and it contains 32,016 square feet, which is 3/4 of an acre versus an acre, and so it's a lot of routine. These things come through here routinely, and so this is one of them, and we felt that it ought to be on consent. Planning staff recommended for it, so it's on consent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that was the last item on the consent agenda, so I would like to move that, to approve consent.
13.
Oh, we have 13?
13, yeah.
Well, I am sorry.
It's okay.
It's a big one.
I missed that.
We will.
So, the next matter is Agenda Item Number 13, and this is an application for an ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan, the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area Master Plan 2018, which will supersede the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area Master Plan 2009, and to amend the executive summary and sections 1.2 Urban Areas and Chapter 3, Plan Imploration and Agenda for Future Action of the Comprehensive Plan 2000. Action of the Comprehensive Plan 2016 pertaining to the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area Plan. And a member of our staff, Mark Shea, is going to explain this and read it into the record.
A brief.
Brief.
Excellent.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, and the planning commissioners, this is concluding approximately a year-long effort to update the existing Burton Station plan from 2009, and we've had extensive citizen participation with this and a number of briefings with the planning commission, city council, and we have come to, you know, pretty much in agreement with the community. There was no suggestions on changes to this text at our last public meeting, so with that, we recommend approval.
Great. Thank you very much.
That's all.
And that is it, Mr. Chairman. That was the last item on the consent agenda, and I would like to move that we approve consented agenda items number one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
I have a motion made by Vice Chair Oliver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hodson.
Chairman.
I, yes.
I need to abstain on items number eight and nine. My company, Batsholder &amp; Collins, Granby Street in Norfolk, is working with that applicant on that project.
Any other?
Address.
Okay. We're ready to vote.
Vote is open. By recorded vote of nine to zero, Agenda Items One, Two, Three, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13 have been approved by consent, with Commissioner Weiner abstaining from items eight and nine.
Thank you. I would like to thank all the applicants who had a matter on the consent agenda today for attending. Those items will now be scheduled for hearing on the city council agenda, so thank you for coming and participating today. So you're more than welcome to adjourn if you care to go and put some plywood up. The next order of business to address will be the remaining one item on the agenda, and I would like to ask the secretary to call the first item, please.
Agenda item number four, No Facet, Teo, Comalafe. It's an application for a conditional use permit, family daycare home on property located at 1961 Arlington Arch in the Centerville District.
Yes, good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
My name is No Facet, Comalafe.
Okay, thank you. And tell us a little bit about what you would like to do. The reason that we have you speaking is because there's someone who wants to speak against your application. So typically, the way the process works is you speak first, tell us what you're going to do. We may have some questions. The opposition speaks, then you have a chance to rebut the opposition, and then we make a decision. So go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'm seeking a conditional use permit for a childcare. I work with, my husband work with the Navy, and we work with the Navy, too, so I have a Navy childcare home before, and the state wants to have a state license so that we can operate on both states and Navy's license. So that's why I'm seeking a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I do. How many children do you care for?
I have four for now.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're looking to have up to 12?
Yep.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you. And when the person opposing your application finishes, if you'd like to come back for rebuttal, we'll have you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker, Bob and Pam Klein. Two speakers.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Bob Klein. Thank you for giving us time to speak. Our concern is not necessarily about the certification qualifications of the applicant. In fact, we just moved into this neighborhood. We live, the property we have is right next door. We haven't even introduced ourselves and talked, but just moving into the neighborhood, Alexandria, all these houses are fairly close together, and right now parking is restrictive. It's very, very tight. Several of the homes have added parking, driveways to alleviate, but still most of the homes in that neighborhood have at least one car parking on Arlington Arch itself. So when there's a car parked on both sides, only one car can pass through. So looking at just the time when people are coming home, there's only going to be one car that's going to be able to pass through Arlington Arch, and there's going to be an additional congestion there. If we have a home daycare center that has up to 12, potentially 12 families coming to pick up children, people are coming home at that same time. So our issue is, it just doesn't seem to be reasonable to us, the additional congestion from a safety stand part, parking, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
And if the applicant would like to come back and have a word of rebuttal, if you care to, if not, that's perfectly okay. It seems like their concerns are traffic.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have parents that come to drop off children. They have different time they drop off. Some come in the morning, and they have a different time schedule for, you know, I work with the Navy. It's not as if maybe all of them will come at the same time or pick up at the same time. Everybody has different schedule throughout the day. Some may drop in the morning, like five, six o'clock, and some may drop at nine, 10, 12. Since I've started the daycare, I never see any congestion in the street.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Well, if there are no questions, we'll close the public hearing and talk amongst ourselves. Karen?
There's a note in here from staff that staff recommends a condition to stagger pickup and drop-off times. Can I ask what timeframes would you designate, you know, would you designate those times? Or would the applicant have to create a set of times that she would be abiding by in order to alleviate traffic on the street?
Typically, we leave that up to the applicant. We don't designate certain times. The intent of that condition is just that she work it out with her clients that not everyone is dropping off, you know, in the same, let's say, 10-minute period.
I think adding that condition would assist with the traffic congestion mentioned by the couple that came forward.
Is that not in there?
No, it's not a condition yet. It's a recommendation for a condition.
I see. I see. So you would suggest adding that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a, I don't know if it's just an observation. She made a comment about that her first person might come at five in the morning. Oh, six o'clock, okay. I must, I read that, never mind.
Jeff?
I mean, I would say on average, we see one of these a month, and this month we have three, and over the eight years I've been on here, that's probably at least 100 that we've seen. Have we had anybody come back with complaints? You know, I know we always bring this up, the traffic and the staggering. Have you had any complaints since we've awarded any of these?
Well, we have dealt with one issue that I am aware of. It was about two years ago, and there were two daycares on the same cul-de-sac bulb, and that is the only issue I've dealt with in my time here.
Okay. I think that's pretty good odds based on 100 or so. So go ahead, Mr. Redmond.
Jeff?
It is a condition. I need to correct myself. It is, it's number one. It's already a condition. Are you crossing your eyes at me, Ray?
I thought you said it was a condition you were reading, and then you said it wasn't.
I was reading the recommendation, but I totally skipped over that one entirely because I got stuck on them recommending it, not saying it out of it.
It's a condition that she's agreed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I move approval of the application.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Redmond, second by Jan Rosensky. We're ready to vote.
Thank you.
By recorded vote of nine to zero, Agenda Item Number Four, No Facet, Teo, Comalafe has been approved.
Is there any further business? Hearing none, on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank everyone for attending today and the planning director and his staff for excellent work. Meeting adjourned.